So we'll call the meeting to order.
Are you wanting to get a card and speak?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, just come on up right there.
He was looking like he wanted to do that.
It wasn't true.
It's all good.
Yeah, I just turn it back into one of the ladies. Okay.
Bless you.
Bless you. Okay, I'll call the regular meeting to order. We'll start with an invocation by Mike Ehlum. I'm going to ask everyone to stand and gentlemen, please remove your hats.
We'll do a quick prayer. Father, we just paused tonight to thank you for the blessings that you give us and just make us mindful of those times where we let the little blessings go by. A lot of times we just don't take the opportunity to slow down, pause, look around, and just count our blessings for the things that you give us every day. I thank you for the opportunity to live in the county that we have. I thank you for all those who serve. I thank you for those who protect our county and put themselves in harm's way just to make sure that the rest of us can go about our daily lives. And I pray that we'll stop and say a special prayer for them of protection and thank them for the opportunity of doing that. We thank you for the country that we live in, the freedoms that you give us every day. We pray that we'll be mindful of those freedoms and not take them for granted and understand that we have those freedoms because others paid a tremendous price for us to have those. We ask for your wisdom tonight as we take up these matters before us and we just pray that we'll keep your will in mind. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Hammond's going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Do the roll call. Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Bresel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
We're all here tonight. First then will be a conditional use permit, Bill number five, one, two, three. Bill number five, one, two, three, requested by Mike Holbert, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP twenty-two dash twelve, for a daycare serving no more than five children at any given time to the Sparrows Nest property owners. Going to ask Mr. Meyer to come up and present that to us. Good evening. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Briefly, this is a, in essence, it's a conditional use permit to operate a daycare within a residential zoning district, his own R one A, single-family residential district. And they're proposing no more than five children at any one time. It would be operated by the Sparrows Nest, who are, which is the applicants. That's a Missouri not-for-profit organization. Previously, they ran a maternity home at this location for many years. But recently, they're changing their business model, as they've said, and now instead they would, they propose to provide services for a specific group of children in need. Again, no more than five children at any one time. So originally, with the original application is for up to ten children at any one time. During the process, they amended that application to be no more than five children at any one time. Just for reference, if it were four or fewer children, it would just be a home, you know, just be babysitting under the county zoning. But they're proposing five, so technically it is a conditional use permit. Along the way, we've gotten feedback from both the county ambulance district as well as the fire district. Those letters are in your packets. They provided feedback specifically on access. So that's probably the most talked about or discussed aspect of this application, the access to this property. It's over a private lane. It's in secluded wooded area. Although it's off Highway K, Hickory Lane is only, it's one car wide. And so only one car can go down on the paved portion. And so if you meet another car along the way, either they have to back up or they have to pull off the side on the, on the shoulder or dirt to let the other car pass. So that aspect specifically was reviewed by the fire district and also the ambulance district and those letters again in your, in your packets. In terms of land use impacts, there are single-family homes immediately behind this property, but they'd be using an existing backyard and it has a screening as well. So five children in the yard at any one time would be pretty much, in terms of noise, I think that would be maybe the main impact. Across the roadway, there's common ground, across Hickory Tree Lane, there's common ground for a subdivision. As part of the conditional use permit hearing, we heard from a neighbor who Hickory Tree Lane crosses his property and he has concerns about access in terms of the number of cars. And that's probably the number one thing that was discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Following the public hearing and taking all testimony, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted eight in favor and zero against approval with certain specific conditions. And county staff concurs with that as meeting the conditional use permit criteria that are referenced in your memo.
Anyone have any questions for Robert? Okay. It's my understanding that there is a garage in the back and that that's going to be demolished and that there are going to be possibly eleven parking spaces for employees and for people coming in and out. Is that?
You know, that was the original plan, yes, to demolish the garage and create some extra parking. Already there are, sorry if I can't remember the exact numbers in the packet, I think there's ten or eleven spaces already there.
Okay.
And as you might imagine, the previous residents, there was maybe ten or eleven adults living at that house previously when it was a maternity home and presumably some of them had cars as well. So I don't know that the, in terms of traffic, it's going to change drastically, but the nature of the traffic will change a little bit.
I'm sure.
Anyone else? Mr. Cronin?
I'm familiar with this lane and that area. I grew up out that way and Mr. Keeven I know pretty well and I've driven that road many times. He called me about this and he apparently had a conversation with Mr. Westfall, if he's here tonight, okay, about it. And they think a real good solution would be, they need a little pull aside, okay? Because that lane is so narrow, okay? And it can be something gravel. It needs to be about ten foot wide, a car wide, and maybe a couple cars long, about forty foot. I spoke with Mike Holbert about it too. And they would like to bring that in as a condition to this approval. Mr. Westfall has agreed with Mr. Keeven. They've talked about a location for it that they think is a good spot, okay? It would actually be close to Mr. Westfall's property on easement. Mr. Keeven, there was some objections about the boulders he put there. He said he would agree to move them out of the way. They did ask that the applicant, since they're going to have construction equipment there, shouldn't cost but a few hundred bucks to put a ten by forty-foot gravel pull aside in there. And so I would like to offer, with agreement with Mr. Ehlum here, that be a condition to put into the conditional use permit. I don't think it would be an expensive situation for the applicant. They're going to have equipment there anyway, but I think it'd alleviate a lot of problems because then two cars could pass. The way it is now, two cars come like this, one of them's got to back up a long ways. That can be a problem, especially in winter time. So I think it's a good solution that Mr. Keeven suggested. I believe he spoke with Mr. Westfall a lot about it and I think the applicant could probably live with it. Might be good for them as well.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Can I just add that there's the easement that crosses the, the one property in the front's fifty feet wide and the lane must be maybe ten feet wide. So presumably there's extra room. Now, if there's ditches on the side of that lane, we'll have to deal with that, but I think there is room. What I'm trying to say is I think there's room to make that work.
There's a spot they found that they think's real good and they will give you the details to it. It's covered right now with, with bush honeysuckle shrub, crap that needs to be tore out anyway. So it's a great spot for it. Shouldn't be a big, to make the thing a whole lot better for everybody.
Okay. Do you want to introduce the applicants?
Sure. Tonight we have, with the Sparrows Nest, among those here tonight are Kurt Kasicki and Dan Kozetek with CEC Engineering.
Okay. Do either of them want to come up and testify?
It's my understanding that both are to testify tonight.
Okay, you want to have him come up then?
Good evening.
If you'll, whoever's going to testify, would you raise your hand to be sworn, please? Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
All right, thank you. Whoever wants to go first.
Thank you, council. My name is Kurt Kasicki. I am the president of the board of the Sparrows Nest. Robert did a great job summarizing kind of who we are and what we're doing, so I'm going to be really brief. As he mentioned, we did operate a maternity home in that location for the past eight years. We had up to eight heartbeats in the house. That's what we were licensed for under the state. In the past couple of years, we've decided to change our focus and see a different need in St. Charles County that we can help alleviate. We've identified childcare as the biggest need, affordable childcare, in St. Charles County. And so we have developed a model to provide free childcare. It still is a not-for-profit. We're still going to be a not-for-profit. There will only be five families. And as part of that model, the, the parents will actually work in the house one day a week to learn parenting skills, that we can still do their social work time with them, and it'll also give them experience in a childcare setting that they could then use to get a job in childcare or just that experience along with the parenting skills and the social work skills. We will be, we have pursued licensing through DUCI to be an in-home daycare. And so we're still discussing with the cut from ten to five on what exactly that will entail, but we do, even if we're not fully licensed, we still intend to operate with all of the licensing restrictions as if we were. Our house is wired already for smoke and fire. We have fire doors that are on the sprinkler, or on the alarms that automatically close. We have sprinklers over places in the kitchen and the hot water heater and that sort of thing from when we were licensed as maternity home. You know, as we've gone through this process, we've met with the neighbors. Mr. Cronin, the, this is the first we're hearing about the meeting with the cutout. They hadn't talked to us about it.
This just happened real today.
Yeah, yeah. So, and I might be stepping on his toes a little bit, but we would have no problem with that. We actually came up with a similar solution.
Make your neighbors very happy.
So, yeah, and we'd be glad to do that. We had come up with a similar solution, like I said, so, so we're happy to hear that, hopefully that alleviates some of the issues. As far as the traffic goes, it'll actually be less traffic than when we were licensed as maternity home because we would have two to three staff at all times and we had several shifts. So we're going from probably thirty trips a day down to ten to fifteen to twenty trips a day. So hopefully that'll alleviate some of the issues with Hickory Tree as well. I think that's.
Yeah. Just to clarify on the.
Your name, sir?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Dan Kozetek, CEC Incorporated, civil engineer. Three thousand Little Hills Expressway, I'm in St. Charles. Just to clarify a couple of things on the parking, yes, eleven spaces is what is currently there. Per the CUP, I think five are required, so there's more than enough for that, that stacking. I totally agree with the idea there of a little bump out or turnout. I'm sure we can come up with something like that. I'd recommend or suggest, if possible, that we work with city staff and the neighbor to just come up with something that works during the site planning process and rather than hash that out in detail here.
Anyone have any questions for the applicants?
Mr. Keeven put most of that road in, okay, the majority of it. He's apparently going to meet with the Westfalls, who's already talked about it, find a location that's suitable, okay? And they said he would forward that to council staff, okay, or county staff. You can get that information if you leave it with the council. I'll make sure it's forwarded to you too, but.
Sounds great.
I think, you know, a couple, a dump truck load of rock and a half hours work with a skid loader and you got to piece them, peace on earth, goodwill to them, man, okay?
We hope so.
Did, did I hear it right that they would move the boulders? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, he, Mr. Keeven said, he didn't realize that was a problem for anybody, but he said he would move them, okay?
Perfect.
So, I mean, I think, I think what he's suggesting, it would be make everything a lot better for everybody involved, okay?
Agreed.
And a little cost to y'all, okay?
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Is there a reason that you went from ten to five?
It had something to do with the fire codes. I'd, to be honest, I, we're under a different licensing structure in the fire codes with five versus ten.
Okay.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
Sure.
Now, if anyone wishes to make a comment on this, if you'll come forward, do you have the comments for the? Okay. All right, Mr. Deenoff, come on up. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do, so help me God. Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman and members of the county council. My name is RNC AC Deenoff, county public advocate. This has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission for the past two months. There was some negotiations in terms of what's happening. At the first phase, I was definitely opposed to it. They were asking for ten students, ten daycare children, and I had some problems with that because of the fire sprinkler system and the state fire marshal code, which would require such fire sprinkler system. That would be a great cost to this organization. What is really detrimental is the public safety for arriving first responders, fire district and ambulance district, in particular, the Cotterwell Fire Protection District and the St. Charles County ambulance district. I was a big proponent of three bump outs. That was never negotiated or gone through the process because there evidently was an association and it's a private road. Every property owner was required to make maintenance payments, but for some reason the parties couldn't get together. I'm glad to hear that the huge boulders will be removed because that's a public safety issue in itself because it's right at the roadway and there's another resident that will testify after me. There were a few cars that ended up stuck turning around on this narrow roadway that's about maybe ten to fifteen feet in width, and it ended up stuck on the boulders. And I saw pictures that were part of testimony to Planning and Zoning Commission. So instead of Mr. Cronin's offer of one, I'd like to see three bump outs, whether they're gravel or asphalt. It would be a small amount. I would ask that, under your auspices and powers of the county council and the county charter, you have the ability to amend a conditional use permit that's in your prerogative. And if you don't believe what I'm saying, please check with Mr. O'Sullivan. He's your county counselor, your legal advisor, but you have that ability and that power to make any amendments that you deem fit for the public health, safety, and welfare and for all property owners here. I like the compromise from ten children down to five children. That's more manageable. It'll cut down on the trips to the facility, which is way in the back. But you must be cognizant of the resident that lives in the middle and they're going to be testifying after myself. Hopefully you'll let them testify. They were late to the meeting unfortunately, got their card in a little late. Hopefully you'll let them testify before you. But they really have some valid concerns and their property rights and their property values need to be upheld. So those are my comments. I would appreciate you taking those into consideration. Public safety is, is the first one and the three bump outs will, I believe, solve the traffic issue. It's kind of sad that we got to this state with such a narrow road and it was allowed in the first place, but now's the time to rectify it with a conditional use permit. It's in your prerogative. It's in the county charter. It's in state law and you have the power and the ability to do so. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Leslie Westfall.
You'll be sworn in.
This one or this one?
The, the one on the podium, yeah. Do you solemnly swear that you will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. State your name.
Leslie Westfall.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
I'm the one that lives at six, seven, one, four Hickory Tree Lane next door and it has been going on for a while. We stated a few of the same things that they've already stated. We kind of got hit with like going from ten to five. We did do a meeting with them. The main thing was just widening the road. Obviously, we don't want to cut out our trees, but we just feel like two cars can't pass. We've submitted documents. They were kind of dismissed and not looked at. We even recorded a video to show how dangerous it is for two cars. We do have a seizure baby, unfortunately. He's here. Sorry, so I was late. I'm excited to hear that it went to five, but they don't live there and they don't understand that the traffic they had before was already a lot. The last three years, we've lived there eight years. We've owned it a year and a half. So the last eight years, we did see like traffic going in and out for the maternity, but we seen it slow down. We didn't know they were affected by the pandemic and that's why. But at one of the meetings, we were told to hire an attorney, so we did. We didn't, we didn't know what to do, so we hired an attorney. In the process of that, we found out that they should have never been submitted to have that home there because the easement was agreed for a single-family home. So they're not sure, our attorney's not sure how it even got approved to that in the first place in nineteen sixty-six with the easement. In the process of that, we also found out that the driveway is on our property. It's not on the easement, so it's trespassing technically. We want to equalize with them because I love the idea. But the, the one thing I just suggest big time is the road situation. One bump out is not going to be enough. I can tell you that. It's just not. There's no way. If you, if you see how the easement turns, if you've got to review the videos, there's just no way. As far as the boulders, I am happy to hear. We talked to Keeven this morning. He is going to remove the boulders. The problem with the boulders is people get stuck on the rocks and nobody can get in or out. The fire trucks can say they can get in, but they, if a truck is stuck there, they cannot get in. We just had a police officer stuck there and he tore up his entire car because he went up that way. But they are getting removed, so I will say I'm happy to hear that. We do ask that you do deny it, but under the conditions, if you approve it, we're okay with it under some conditions. We'd like to widen the road or at least a three bump outs, like something more than just, because if you see the road, there's no way one bump out will work. It's going to have to be a bump out before the tree line and then after the tree line somehow. It's just going to have to be that way. There's no way that it will work. I already spoke on the rocks. And then we asked that they maintain the road. We've lived there eight years. They've never maintained the road. It's been us and Keeven. We've owned it a year and a half though, and again, it's been us and Keeven and the electric company when we call about the trees on the wires. Another thing that we ask if you do approve it is that they understand, they mentioned that, we didn't even get to speak, they spoke on our son's behalf, saying he goes to school at eight AM. Our son goes to school at six thirty AM at the end of the driveway. We just asked that they, obviously are going to have a connection with these people who are clients or whatever you want to call, if they could just let them know, children live on the street too. This is not a commercial spot. I don't even know how it ever got approved in the first place for the maternity, for the safety of the home next door and their family in a one-way road. Maybe a two-way, but a one-way, I just don't understand it with the trees. But we asked that they just understand that our son Dion does go to school at six thirty in the morning and to watch out for them in his bus because the bus was hit. We did report that. It was hit a long time ago when we lived there and he was in fifth grade when it was hit. And there were students on that bus that got hurt. You can look it up. There's a police report and everything about it. So the traffic coming in is what we worry about. There's, we asked the city when we first moved in if they could put in a stoplight there, but they can't. So then they suggested that our son get picked up at our business in the plaza because we do own a business in that plaza. So he had to go to school every day and get picked up and dropped off in that plaza. He's a little older now, so I feel safer with him walking down the street. It's just people who don't live there, they don't mind, they don't, they don't care. They won't slow down. So we do have a speed limit thing put in, so people think that works, but it doesn't. So we just ask another condition, if you do approve it, if they could just be courteous that our kids do live there and they play there. Other than that, I mean, like I said, it comes down to, I would just like to meet terms with them too because I know how bad they would like to do this, but I also know that originally it should not have been approved. They are trespassing technically. So if we can at least come to terms for safety for everybody with the road condition, I think that we could possibly come to some type of agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, or Ms. Westfall?
So I was driving down that road today.
Yes, sir.
Just to check it out.
Yes, sir.
So you live in the house right before that?
Yes, sir.
Do you own a busing company?
So we have the buses on our property, so they brought that up the last few times. So it concerned me because I said, well, that doesn't have anything to do with it. But then I understood why he asked me. He assumed that like we were shuttling traffic and I said, no, those buses go out in the evening. So those buses leave no sooner than seven PM. Then it was, well, how does that fit down the road? That's as big as the trash truck that comes down the street and turns around either my driveway or Sparrows Nest driveway. So the, the length of that bus, the width of that bus, and the times of that bus, there's no, it's a bus. It's not thirty or fifteen cars. So I didn't understand their point with that, but then they had asked that at the second meeting too, and then I got the point from a lady on this side why they asked. They were saying, well, we're inducing traffic too. And they thought like people were like, I guess, coming to the shuttle? And I explained to them, no one's on it, a driver, that is it, that's on that bus whenever it's shuttled. And actually, they haven't even been shuttled for the last four months.
I thought there were four. It looked like there were four buses on your property.
Yeah, but the other, there, there's only one that runs. It's a white and blue one. And we actually have to, we have talked to the city because we're building a pole barn. We plan to build, we have four acres there. You just probably didn't notice how much because it's behind our land.
Right.
But we ran into issues with our builder and so we did talk to the county about it because obviously it brought attention to that. We never knew it was an issue, but they did say, yes, you have to have a barn for those. So we told them we would get a barn. We could move them now. We told them we have land up in Chesterfield where they could actually park because there's our family business we have up there, a paving company. And they told us, it's okay, just get that permit in because we want to build our own pole barn anyways.
I just didn't know, but they'd been talking about traffic and how narrow the road was and I thought, well, if you can get four buses in there and turn them around and navigate them in and out safely, then it would tell me that the road is wide enough.
It's as wide as a trash truck, yes. As wide as a regular, if you had a yellow bus, a school bus.
So how old have you had the buses?
Um, end of twenty twenty.
Okay, so for a few years, couple of years?
End of twenty twenty, yeah, two years.
So you've been able to navigate okay?
But I, I mean, the thing, to turn around. But I mean, to turn around, yes. The problem's not that their people won't be able to come down and turn around. The problem is that when we're coming out and they're coming in, or when that person drops off little Timmy and she's coming down with Jennifer, that's where the problem's going to happen. The boulders, thank God, are being moved because that would be even a third problem to that.
I just, there was some discussion about commercial business and all of that. So when I drove by today, I thought, are you running a commercial business out of residential property? Because that's what it looked like when I drove by.
And that's what they asked me. So I did speak to, I think his name's Mark.
So that's.
Yeah, and I talked to Mark and I told them we could move the buses.
You talked to Mark?
I think his name's Mark. I don't have my paperwork. No, 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 no. A guy with the county.
Oh, okay.
I don't, with permits. Because I said, look, they brought this up twice and they have my emails and everything. I've talked to them for the last three weeks since Thanksgiving, since the last meeting. Because I said, I didn't understand why that's being brought up because that didn't have anything to do with what this is.
I think it was more of the concerns that people were bringing up with traffic and narrowness of the road, so.
Well, it concerned me because I asked them, do I need one? Because business isn't done in my home. I said, I don't even have an office. Because if it was, then I'll buy me an office and write it off on my taxes. And he goes, no, let's talk Monday. So actually, we were supposed to talk this Monday.
Okay.
So, but as far as that going up and down, there's only, again, our trash truck comes every Wednesday. I wish our bus would come down and pick our son up. I tried. I even got ahold of the county and they can't. They said that they can't. But if I can move a bus down in a trash truck and an Amazon truck, an Amazon truck is actually even wider, but that you still can't, if you watch the video, there's not even a half a, there's no way two cars can pass each other. But if they could put three bumps out, at least it keeps from you backing up. And something I don't think they considered because they're usually not there because they don't live there, at 6:00 p.m. right now, it's dark. Imagine backing up if you drove down there and you come down. There's no light. We wanted to put a light in, but we'd have to pay for it. So, and you probably, if you go by at night, we have our own lights hooked to our trees. They're like solar lights. But if you drive by, you have to back up. If I'm coming out of one of my driveways, you got to move out of my way or where am I going to go? Now I'm going to back up too. Like who's going where? And if you don't live there, you're not familiar with it. Keven is familiar with it. We respect each other. It's each other's land.
Sure.
You move, I move. But it literally feels like we're playing cat and mouse when someone that doesn't live there. It's like, you got to back up. You got to back up. I can't back up anymore. I'm past the tree line. I can't see.
Thanks.
So it's just dangerous and badass.
Thank you, ma'am.
I got a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Would you be willing to contribute to additional bump outs?
We even talked to Keven about that and neither, none of us have come to the term of us wanting to put that investment into something that wasn't for us. I mean, I don't want to speak for my own husband. He kind of makes those decisions too, but we did speak with the home Kirk. We did speak with him about it and we asked him if he could present something, but at the last meeting, he said that was out the window. So now I'm confused because now I just heard you guys talk about it. So now I guess it's back on the table.
Mr. Cronin.
Apparently, your husband talked to Mark Keven this afternoon, just a few hours ago.
Yes, sir.
And Mark's a good guy and he also knows a lot about building. He built that road.
Yes.
So I think if you work with Mr. Keven, okay, he'll figure out a solution. You guys figure a solution that works for you guys, Mr. Keven and the Sparrows Nest folks. I don't think it'd be expensive and I think it would solve the problem, but I think Mr. Keven's intention is to meet with you, with Mr. Westfall again, figure out where and how, okay? Get the information to county staff and get it over to the folks with Sparrows Nest and get it done.
Yeah, that's what it sounded like. That's why I said I was happy that he caught us on our way out while with my husband this morning. He did speak to him. So as I said, if it gets accepted, just some conditions would be nice because we are the neighbor.
And I think he plows it, even though he doesn't have to, he plows it.
He used to. He doesn't anymore, but he did use to. I think it's because our son kind of took it over, so he kind of just stopped doing it. But he would, if I did ask even, he definitely would.
Yeah, he's a good neighbor.
Yeah.
Well, you guys will work it out.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other speakers?
No further speakers.
Okay. All right, so that will conclude the hearing on the conditional use permit. It will be on our next agenda item for voting. That is December the 19th. Next, we have a public hearing on the 2023 budget for St. Charles County Government. That bill is actually going to be voted on later on in the agenda, I believe. It'll be introduced. I'm sorry, it'll be introduced, excuse me. We've been doing the budget for so long, I forgot where we were in the process. We already had a couple of work sessions, so now we're here for public comments. So anyone who wishes to make a comment, who has filled out a card, we'll call.
Joe Esmar.
Thank you, council members. I'm Joe Esmar. I'm an employee of the Police Department and you'll see several police officers here tonight. What I want to talk about is the budget and a lot of questions come up about the budget and how we get to those numbers. Well, these officers are seeing not only across the river, but our neighbors at other jurisdictions and their pay increases. While the county's kind of been sitting quiet on it and doesn't get that much information. This is a show me state and that's what we're known for. Currently, at some of the budgets, if you run some of the numbers, some people are going to see significant increases. It's not so much the police officers. The starting pay for a police officer is only going up 6.85%. Currently, the police sergeants are going up 25.75%. The lieutenant, 17.56. Same with the captains and for the chief, 19.7. Some of the director positions, the director of HR, the starting pay from last year to this year is going up 19.7%. 17.56% for the director of emergency communications, 6.88% for community development and corrections. Corrections officers are going up 14.87% on their starting pay from last year to this year. Dispatchers, 23.48% and deputy of field services, 6.85%. So we're not making a huge investment into the starting pay for our officers. And that's probably one of the biggest problems we have with recruiting and retention of officers and moving them through the pay grade. It shouldn't take 20-plus years for an officer to go to top out. Should not take 20 years. They will leave and they will go somewhere else and get better pay. We have to bring ours up and we have to do something better than what's on the table. I think it's a step in the right direction and I think we should capitalize on that and move forward from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Don Van.
Good evening, council members, members of the executive board. My name's Donald Van, president of Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 15. My lodge represents all the police officers here and all the deputy sheriffs that are here. It looks like the new pay rate, pay plan is a 7% higher than last year. It's a 20-year step plan, 2% per year. I understand the county's thought process about the employees on the same pay plan. Let's talk about years. Law enforcement, police officers and deputies in this county are the only jobs that are allowed to retire at 55 under the logger system. All their employees in this county have to go to 65 before they can retire. Why should a police officer or deputy have to work 20 years to get the top of their pay? And they can retire 10 years sooner. If a 14-year plan is 3% per year step raises and you can take the pay plan, pay grades for police and deputies out of the 20-year plan, put on the side, same pay and everything, your deputies and officers can retire at an early age and you can hire new officers at the starting salary. This would fall within the norm for police departments in the area of eight to 14-year step raises. Now, let's talk about the police officers. Police officers, their pay is a little bit less than most of the cities in this county and a lot of cities across the river. Our deputies that are assigned to the courthouse, they are paid less than our jail employees, the ones that carry guns and do transports. They're paid a step pay, a step grade lower than them. They should be at least the same. Our court security marshals, they're our first line of defense. They're at every door in the county courthouse, municipal court and juvenile court. They're going to be paid $17.13 an hour. You go to St. Louis City, their security officers are paid $18.02 an hour. The average pay for a security guard armed in St. Charles County is $22 an hour. I think they should get their pay raised up. So all I can say is that the 14-step plan is a 3% pay raise per year. Our law enforcement can retire at the age of 55. Some officers start their career late in life. They can't top out till 20 years. That ain't right. If they can top out in 14 years, you can benefit, they can benefit. It all works out. So we ask you to look at the pay scale, look at the payroll. 14 years is what we need, 3% per year. It'll work and we can retire at 55 maybe and you can start another people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
David Reagan.
Good evening.
My name's Dave Reagan. I'm with Labor's Local 42. We represent Department of Corrections. What I've been hearing from our members is this is, the new pay plan is definitely a step in the right direction, especially for the tenured COs. It might help also retaining and attracting some new COs. However, as you all know, and you've talked about it several times the past couple of meetings, Department of Corrections is depleted. They're tired. They're doing mandated OT like crazy, okay? And if I'm reading your budget right, it looks like you're short about 30 people, okay? So we have some suggestions to help stop the bleeding. I'm sure there's a ton of them, but this is what we came up with as our initial thoughts. Sign-on bonuses. This is not new territory. Departments and businesses all over the country are doing this. It's not just private businesses. Governments are doing it as well. And this would apply for sheriff and police as well. You couple your pay raise with a nice sign-on bonus and you might actually attract some new people in. As you all discussed last time, right now, there's not really a whole lot of new people coming into the profession of law enforcement or corrections. So we're kind of just passing around people from one department to another. But you couple the pay raise and a nice bonus, you might get some more people, okay? You might want to consider rehiring old staff, staff that has left because the pay wasn't that great. They were getting mandated all the time. Now you want to maybe call them back, say, hey, you hear what we're doing? We're getting a good pay raise. We may be offering bonuses. Would you be interested in coming back? Then you've got somebody coming back into the job who already knows what they're doing. They don't have to go through a lengthy training process. You've got somebody ready to go. Incentive bonuses. How about giving a bonus PTO day to the person that works the most overtime each month? You've already got this listed in the PAP as something you can do. I believe it's 115.670. I don't know if Rory can answer to that, but I believe that's already an option. So again, it's not new ground, but just throw them a bone. Give them something to show they're appreciated for working all that overtime. And again, that applies to these guys as well as corrections. Don, I talked about retiring. For corrections, they have to retire late, 60 or 65, I believe. Recently, though, the state passed a law that each municipality can lower the retirement rate for corrections, EMS dispatch. And I know Joanne was looking at it and she has told us that they are looking at it. We get the budget has taken up a good chunk of your time. We understand that. But if you can lower the retirement rate for a CO down to 55, like what these guys get, that's a goal, an attainable goal for some of these guys who've been there a while and want to enjoy some life. I think that needs to be done sooner rather than later, okay? Again, while we think the pay plan is a step in the right direction, there are some things that can be done and we look forward to working with you and making some of them happen. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arne D. Knopf.
Thank you, members of the council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Knopf, county public advocate, and I have a lot to go through with our huge budget that we have and taxpayers really don't even know it's inside the several hundred-page budget. I'm shocked at this council that budget talks have come to a halt. I hear a lot of rhetoric at these committee meetings that are very short, an hour or less, when we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars in taxpayer money at stake here. You're paid very highly and get medical benefits and a pension yourself as county council members, and I'm shocked that these talks have come to a halt, that there's very, that there's all kinds of talk, but there's little plans, little discussion-making and little direction at the administration. I don't know who's running this county, if it's the people to my right or if it's the people up on the dais. I'm really shocked. The city of Wentzville announced through their administrator and mayor that their regional job employee market will go from 50% to 60%. So that's going to be another problem with salaries, especially for police officers and other general employees. The city of O'Fallon announced about two months ago in an email to all city employees that the regional employee job market that the city is going to go from 50 percentile to 75 percentile. Most of these police officers, if they're smart, O'Fallon has loggers and they're going to end up leaving St. Charles County and going to O'Fallon that has over 10 open positions because it's going to be a huge increase in salary. When you get to the county executive administrative employees, there are buried salaries. There are hidden salaries with no transparency and public disclosure. You lump them into big amounts, but you don't break them out into individual job titles. So it's hard for citizens and even hard for employees to decipher who's paying and who's getting what salary. There's a hint of ghost employees and ghost employee salaries, co-mingled and grouped into one obscure number amount. Top administrator and director managers, boys, the county executive is really taking care of them, but the popularity of salaries compared to the employees in the field and the trenches and in the trenches on the front lines is night and day. In March 2021, this post-despatch disclosure from a public information request, in the office of county executive, Steve Elman, the county executive, made $159,952. And in this budget, he wants $183,000. Joanne Lycum, Director of Administration, this year earned $200,000. And with the current huge manager pay increase and you're forgetting about the people in the trenches and out in the fields on the front lines, she's going to make between $230,000 and $250,000. And that is ludicrous. Her pay compared to their pay is ludicrous. John Greishew, Assistant Director of Administration, currently $144,768. And if they give him 20 to 30%, he's going to be about 180. And that's ludicrous, the popularity and the amount of percentage compared to a person who's making $50,000, $60,000. Bob Schnar, who you promoted from Director of Finance to Assistant Director of Administration, $144,768. That's what Jennifer George is making. I'm assuming, because there's no disclosure, that he's making that currently and you're going to give him a $20,000 to $30,000 pay bump. Vicky Huslman, who's the Chief of Staff and the lobbyist, $72,000 to $257,000. She's getting ready to retire, and Steve wants to take care of her. What's her inflated salary going to end up being? Kelly Gibbs, the assistant, the grunt worker, $49,453, what will her salary be? It's undecided because you lumped it into one amount, and you're hiding these salaries. The request that the county executive put through this year was $1,126,132. Recommended by the Director of Finance and her staff was $1,172,444, and the appropriated amount is $1,209,933. This does not include an extra $245,000 for health insurance, dental insurance, eye care insurance, life insurance, disability insurance, workers' compensation, social security contribution, pension contribution, deferred compensation match, employee assistance program, and the employee tuition reimbursement. And when it comes to the county council and its employee staff, there are seven members. The chairman and vice chairman both get, I believe the chairwoman gets an additional $1,750, which is really ridiculous for two meetings a month, and the vice chair gets an added inflation, which is buried in the budget and is an unknown amount. You asked for an appropriation in 2022 this year for $132,216 for the seven of you. Appropriation in 2023, of course, you're going to give yourself a huge pay raise, $143,899, and that doesn't include the full medical benefits that you get, the same as all the employees behind me, and you get a lifetime pension a lot sooner than they do, I believe in 10 years. So then you come to Donna Vaat, the council director, makes a salary according to the post-dispatch of $66,215. And Claire Felder, the assistant to the council, no disclosure of salary in the budget found anywhere, and it's not reported to the post dispatch. So in my opinion, her salary is hidden, secret, and she's a ghost employee in terms of what her amount of salary is made to the public, and that's a crying shame. The other insurance and benefits are going to be $150,000 for these two individuals. So it seems like when it comes to salaries, we're taking care of elected officials, including the collector, the recorder, the prosecutor, the sheriff, the elections director, they're all going to get a $35,000 pay bump, but the employees are left off the table. These people to my right, you're taking care of them, and of course, you're taking care of yourself and your families for a lifetime. Now I'd like to move on to other issues within the budget. The next issue is the county road board half-cent sales tax, and this is very controversial. Chapter 120, Article 6, Section 120.790 of the county road board states, "The annual funding recommendations derived from the Three-Year Transportation Improvement Plan. Projects should be recommended for funding from capital improvements, sales tax, or purpose, which may include traffic relief, construction, reconstruction, and repair roads and bridges within St. Charles County." It states nowhere in there about economic development, but for some reason, the administration and the county road board think that they could spend $15 million of our half-cent sales tax on economic development that was never approved by voters in either January 19th of 1994 and three times since then in a 10-year renewal system. So Section 120.825, annual budget recommendation, I'm asking that you cut out economic development because that's a responsibility of the municipalities and the county from the Workforce Development Fund. And I'm tired of this administration making up rhetoric and making up their own laws and regulations stating that economic development goes for part of the half-cent sales tax when it's illegal. And I'm going to tell you right now, if you spend $5 million for the city of St. Charles this year that's reported in the budget, I will sue the county and contest it legally, and you can bet that and take it to the bank, because I'm tired of this county taking advantage of taxpayers and putting things in the law that we never approved as taxpayers, such as the county airport. The county airport, with our county use tax for parks and recreation, says nothing about an airport. And so during last, the session, you know, this county airport is ending up to be a money pit, and you want to put it into the Department of Parks to utilize the countywide use tax. This is a wrong move, and we need to turn the county airport into a profit venue rather than drain the county budget and taxing county residents with federal and state grants that do nothing but subsidize millionaire families who could afford the actual cost to run, operate, and maintain the county airport on their own in a private venue. I question if the county would even be eligible to apply for grants if it is considered a park and a recreational use, which we, again, as taxpayers, never approved in a ballot measure for the use tax, and I will challenge in circuit court legally because you don't have that authority, and I'm putting it on the record tonight. You do not have that authority to spend use sales tax on a county airport nor the family arena, which has come up. We need oversight airport commission because we're spending money out the air in that venue, and we're not getting the return on investment. And again, what's the next move and the next sneaky weave and type move under taxpayers is you're going to put the family arena operations into the park department. We need to stop this transfer of power in its tracks. The next issue I want to talk about is the three county lobbyists. Boy, the county executive takes care of his pals in the state legislature or former legislators. Mr. Gibbons, who is the Missouri House and Senate lobbyist, you purport in this budget to give $90,000 in a contract, and that's ludicrous for the former Speaker of the Missouri House that does nothing for St. Charles County. I go and I testify before the legislature on almost every bill before the legislature, and why don't you give me the money at one-third the price, and I'll save you taxpayer money rather than spend it with a friend that Mr. Elman made in the legislature? I'm tired of paying him $90,000 a year and no return on investment. The next person is Tom Dempsey, former state senator, works for billionaire Rex Singfeld, and the county pays this former senator to work on transportation lobbying before MoDOT instead of the job accounting executive and director of administration, which I go to all the Transportation Commission meetings and I testify before our road projects. I'll do it for one-third of the $90,000 that you're paying Mr. Dempsey. That's a ridiculous amount, and we should be ashamed of ourselves. And then we have the federal lobbyists that we pay to lobby federal money from the federal Department of Transportation. We get bids over bids before council meetings, and most of those bids are from a sole bidder. That needs to stop. A lot of the bids are coming in for road projects and other projects that are 30% to 60% over engineer and architect recommendations. When it comes to vehicle and fleet maintenance, we have an excellent fleet manager. We take care of our vehicles and change them every time you sneeze. They're changing the tires, the brakes, the oil, and I agree with that, but we can keep our vehicles a lot longer than what we're trying to get rid of in the first place. And then we're getting bids, and we're buying from other parts of the state, and so supporting our local business and our neighbors. And these bids from single bids for vehicles need to come to a halt. We need to be supporting our county businesses, as I said. Flooding and erosion control. There are neighborhoods in terms of heritage that are falling apart because you don't want to conquer that issue, and you don't want to put the money that's needed to stop the erosion and stop people from being forced from their homes because of erosion control and because the county wasn't compliant and didn't inspect the developers to make sure that property owners were protected and that the code was followed from the get-go. The jail renovations. I have told you over and over the last three years, we need to build a new jail on 15 acres of land or 20 acres of land that we own on Tom Ginever in O'Fallon. For $75 million, we could build the state-of-the-art, the envy of the nation with the top technologically advanced methods of having a centralized jail in a central part of the county. But no, you want to put $90 million to $143 million in a dinosaur building that you're never going to fix, and you're never going to make it right, you're never going to make it safe for the employees, and it's never going to be justified, or it's never going to be on the cue for what a new, current jail should be in terms of the mandates that are put forward by the federal and state government. I've talked about the airport to parks and the family arena. It's illegal. It's a bad idea. And you get grants, and you're always having your hand out for grants. Well, we're taxpayers, not only at the local level, at the county level, we're taxpayers at the state and federal level, and you keep having your hand out to get these grants. But you only want to take care of special interests and forget about the employees or the 433,000 county residents. So I ask that you fire the three county lobbyists in the outside attorney firm that you pay over $100,000 to help Mr. O'Sullivan, that he can't handle some of the cases with his 13 to 14 associate county counselors. The lobbying should be done by the elected officials. The lobbying should be done by the ex-state House member and senator, Mr. Elman, who's now going to make $183,000 plus a Ford Police Explorer, lifetime pension, and medical benefits, and our $230,000 to $250,000 Director of Administration, along with the $260,000 to $275,000 Assistant Directors of Administration, with your Chief of Staff lobbyist who's registered with the Missouri Ethics Commission, Mrs. Huslman. How many lobbyists do we need? We get zero return on investment. And I am tired of the executive and the Director of Administration taking care of his managers and directors who are political appointees and forgetting about our police officers, our sheriff's deputies, our corrections officers, our court employees. Our court employees is an embarrassment. We pay them. They've been, some people have been there 20 to 30 years, they make $32,000. If they have two children, they're on public welfare and food stamps, and they're running our courts on a day-to-day basis, and that's a shameful salary. We pay shameful salaries to our juvenile officers. We pay shameful salaries to our road workers. I could go on and on and on. All I've heard from this council is rhetoric, talk, breakdown in budget issues. I haven't heard you put your foot down and give solid direction to the people sitting over here and a marching order to the Director of Administration and Director of Finance to narrow these issues down and to finally get on at least a three-year plan, and I want a five- and a 10-year long-range plan. We keep moving the buck down the road. You are elected officials. I expect more from you, and I expect responsibility and transparency, and in this budget, it's not there. Those are my comments, men and women. Thank you.
Final speaker. Okay, that's the final speaking, speaker. Next is public comments.
Brian and Laura Rebow.
Public comments are limited to three minutes. There'll be a timer on the clock up here, so we have...
Nancy, back to the, we're at the public hearing. We're able to say, make comments if we choose, right?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
No, I just want to make, on some of the statements the last speaker said, I just want to clarify. According to the numbers I have, the Director of Administration is actually getting a bump of 1.87%. The Director of Finance is actually getting a 4.09%, and I didn't see in my numbers. If I missed something, I'd like to know. I didn't see anybody get a bump in their $30,000s, like was stated, so that's, none of that's true. So I'm just, a lot of the executive team, there's very few that are getting paid. One director is getting a 19%, but that's because when you run the averages, they got to get up to where everybody else is. But we're going to talk about all this other stuff later, but just clarifying some of the things that were said that was inaccurate.
Thank you. Mr. Cronin.
Another inaccuracy is, I think I can speak from this. I've been county vice chair for the county council five times. The vice chair didn't get any additional money. And the pension program that Mr. Dinoff liked to talk about, I'm retiring, I'm 67 years old, I've been 12 years in county service, I'm getting $174 a month, okay? I'm not complaining because it's a part-time job, but it's not like we're getting wealthy up here, folks, okay?
Anyone else want to make a comment from the dais? Okay, all right. Thanks for those comments. Okay, so now we do have public comments. Those are three-minute limit on public comments. If your name is called, please come to the podium and make your comments.
Brian and Laura Rebow.
Sorry for the delay. Are you each going to speak?
No, we're together.
Okay.
We're on Bill 5124.
Okay.
We'll both speak.
All right.
Do you want to speak on this at the time we bring the bill up?
Yeah, I thought that's what we did on the 16th. I didn't know where...
You could do it now, or you could wait till the bill comes up.
It doesn't matter. We'll do it now.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead. What was the bill number again?
5125 on the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
So we were here on the 16th, and we are back because we amended from C2 to CO for our rezoning. I don't know how much they gave you guys from that meeting. After speaking to our attorney, we amended it to CO from the C2 and sent that email over. He also had us look into a couple other things because a lot of the comments that were against that meeting were about people parking on the road or whose right-of-way the road was and if we were on their public road. We actually have a MoDOT maintenance sign in our property, so we took pictures of it and wanted to hand that over to you guys. If you picture Hill Road, it looks like a J. So the first block is actually our property. We're the first...
Thank you.
...house there where Piney Road comes into that. We're two residential homes away from the gas station, and then there's Piney Lakes Apartments that sit kind of behind that. We bought the property, we renovated, put about $80,000 into it. One of the concerns was that Piney Lakes Apartments was right there. Honestly, we still fixed up the property with, you know, hoping to improve a lot of the property values around us and hopefully having a good relationship with neighbors. So some of those concerns, actually, I wish they would have come to us before, but we had no clue. Since then, we actually have put inside the building, if there is somebody there for some awful reason. We have two parking lots, one up top, one bottom, asking that they wouldn't park on the road, which we are fine. It's a state road, so actually, it's not illegal for people to park on that road. That's not where the private road starts. It starts after our property. So if they want to call the state and have that, put there no parking, have at it. We've actually kept up some of the maintenance around the weeds and things that the state hasn't. We also put in, and we didn't bother the neighbors with this, we put in some security and lighting on the property because we were getting riffraff from the apartments coming down, drinking in the parking lots, and being on Hill Road, and we just didn't bother anybody. We called some of our great officers who are here, actually, a couple nights because our alarm systems were going off, and since we've renovated and put those in, we've had zero issues with that. So we are very, very happy with that. Going forward, we just wanted to make sure that you guys had the notes that we changed it to CO. We're actually talking about selling the property. We have a buyer. It would just be an office property for a digital marketing company. And then we, like I said, parking is there. There are two lots. There's parking up top, parking on the bottom.
Yeah, and as far as, you know, the road itself, where the building's located, it's actually on County Road. It's weird. There's private behind it, and there's, you know, a little bit of place of where old Piney Road was, and, but that's all, that's part of that's Wentzville, though, but what's in front of us?
It's Highway 61.
Yeah, then that's just county.
And then there's a field, and then there's actually in 2011, a C2 zoning.
Your time is up, but there are two of you, so I'll let you finish your briefly.
Well, the C2 zoning is across the field. That's what the bottom is on that note that I just handed you. In 2011, someone allowed a little tiny lot the same size as ours to be zoned C2, and then, you know, two houses away, there's a gas station and apartments. So we are in the future use of commercial land, if you look at the 2030 plan as well, and so we're just asking for this to happen a little sooner.
And also keep in mind, this building, ever since it was built, it's been used as a commercial.
Sack's driveway was there.
It's been used as a commercial.
So just to clarify, the bill will be introduced tonight, but it won't be voted on until the next meeting after that.
We appreciate it.
Did anyone want to make a comment?
It's public comment.
Yeah, but I mean, you didn't want, I thought I heard somebody down there wanted to say something.
That was the public hearing, the first one.
I got you.
We can ask questions when the bill's introduced.
Yeah, I know. I just thought I heard somebody making a noise that they wanted to talk about.
Yeah, and we're open to questions.
I know you're not, but you do anyway, so I don't know. Okay, thank you very much.
So we don't need to answer questions?
No, not now.
No, no.
When it comes up.
Okay, thank you.
Reginald Hemmer.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Reginald Hemmer. I live at 1947 Hill Road.
Okay. Again, do you want to wait until the bill comes up, or do you just want to go ahead and make comments now? It's up to you.
I'll make them now.
Okay.
I live at 1947 Hill Road. It's the last house on the road. That part is all a private street, and we're concerned about the parking problem down there by the warehouse. At times, they've had cars in their parking lot. There's one in front of the building and one up on the side around the corner, and they have that full, and they still have cars that park on the street coming up towards our road. And we feel that that is dangerous. It cut down visibility around the corner. It, I know there's not as, before, years ago, before the state come through, there was room on the side straight away from the buildings. To the side of the street, there was a shoulder there where the employees could park there. But since they put the new Polk, David Polk overpass in, they've eliminated all that. They've made the turn from Hill Road to, or... all that, they've made the turn from Hill Road to, or from, uh, from Hill Road to Piney Road more difficult, because there's actually less area than what there was before. There's also, uh, I think it's a phone, or maybe a, some type of electrical box, or, oh, they're about two or three foot tall, all kinds of grass around it, brush, um, there's limited visibility, and we don't think any more traffic for commercial enterprises is needed there, due to the, the safety, driving around these two corners, due to lack of, of visibility, and they're on our street, part of it. So, uh, I'm against it, I don't think it will help matters any, even the people on, uh, Piney Road won't benefit from it either, because if there's, uh, more commercial trucks coming down than what there is now, now there's a garbage truck once a week, and occasional UPS, or FedEx, or what, like that, uh, anything other than those kind of vehicles, it, it would be difficult to make that first turn.
Your time is up, sir, if you want to come back up when we, when the bill is introduced and make further comments.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Judith Hemmer.
You'd rather wait, should we, yeah, that's fine.
Ryan?
I can wait, that's more convenient to you.
Okay, alright.
Thank you very much, members of the County Council, Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, County Public Advocate. Uh, I brought up last week that there was a person who comes to the Office of Administration and the County Executive's Office, that rings the doorbell constantly and pounds on the glass, that person was, I understand, arrested by St. Charles Police for assault of a police officer, then he runs down to the County Counselor's Office and does the same. Through staff, I understand, that he broke that electronic mechanism, and I ask that this county charge him for the repair of that several thousand dollar system. That person and individual shall be held liable and accountable, and taxpayers shouldn't have to pay that repair bill. DeClaire Felder and Donna Vought, I want you to hear me very clearly as county staff, and I ask for an apology on the record for what you have libeled and slandered me. I was not being held on the November fourteenth County Council meeting, I was at a city council meeting in O'Fallon. So I ask that you stop your, uh, your, your spewing out false rhetoric, uh, lies and incorrect information that are false, libel and slanderous, you may be hearing from elected officials, which are not true. Every judge, uh, recuse themselves, and a Supreme Court appointed a judge from another part of Missouri to preside over two piece, two pieces of servants charges that I was charged in County Circuit Court was. There was violation of my civil rights and constitutional rights, I was found not guilty by twelve peers of our county of St. Charles, and I want that to be a matter of public record. It cost the city of O'Fallon thirty-three thousand dollars of taxpayer money, when the chair, when the presiding chairperson of the jury admonished the city for if you're bringing such ridiculous charges. The county of St. Charles is out seventy-five hundred dollars in jury fees, I would like a written apology for you spreading rhetoric and lies, rumors that need to stop, or I'll have to add both of you to a federal lawsuit for Section two-eighty-two wrongly using power under the color of law, and using your authority as a appointed county official. Stop repeating lies and know the facts. And the last thing is, candidates who want to file for the Water Board, County Ambulance Board, Fire Protection Districts, School Boards, City Council Board of Alderman, April election finally begins tomorrow, December sixth, at eight AM. If you want more information, please send me an email, A-R-N-I-E-D-I-E-N-O-F-F at yahoo.com, or text me at three-one-four-four-four-zero-nine-thousand. We need good people to serve in elected offices, we need to put a stop to the twenty-five thousand dollar salary of Water Board Commissioners, which is illegal and in violation of state law. Thank you.
Who was the final speaker?
Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is oral report from the County Executive, Mr. Elman.
I have just very short comments, uh, first of all, a clarification, um, not only is Mr. Brazel correct in what he said, but the, the suggestion and the, the numbers that were given for raises for elected officials, uh, I think most people know that under the charter, you can, we cannot get raises while we are serving our term. We have to get reelected, and then we can get the raises from the previous four years. So yes, uh, it may look like a big number for elected officials on, on the raise this year, but, but we can only get a raise every four years, and, and the raise that we do get, as you know, is the same as the average raise that our, uh, employees get each year, and we go ahead and we put that in the budget, but we can't start collecting it until we're reelected. Uh, the only other thing, uh, I, uh, I just want, I hear that, uh, actually, I know that the staff did a great job presenting, uh, the budget the last two meetings, I'm sorry that I was not able to be here, um, I have to, uh, I have to thank them, and I guess ultimately, all of you, too, for the, the, the restraint that you've shown over the last decade or so, but I'm just so happy that when we started the budget process here, nobody came to me and said, there's a forty-one million dollar hole in the budget, like St. Louis County. So, uh, that doesn't, uh, I don't know how they got a forty-one million hole, uh, but I'm very happy that we don't, and I think it's because, uh, staff has done a good job of presenting things to you, and you all have been very responsible in, uh, in your budget decisions, and I want to thank you all for that.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to pass a compliment on, okay, to Chief Fritz, and whoever worked in County Counselor's Office on the agreement, uh, with St. Louis City Soccer Club, great deal for the Police Department, great deal for the citizens of this county, great deal for St. Louis City Soccer Club, and that new venue with all those folks, so, Chief, if you worked on it, or Rory, you worked on it, pat yourself on the back, 'cause I read it, you guys did a great job on it.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion, is there a second then?
Second.
Okay. Um, any questions or discussions? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the consent agenda is passed. Uh, bills for introduction, bill number-
Final passage, fifty-one-twenty-two.
We don't have that until next week, because we didn't have two weeks, so we get introduced-
It's on the next, I'm sorry, it's on the next, uh, meeting. Bills for introduction, bill number five-one-two-four.
Bill number five-one-two-four requested by Michael Horberg, sponsored by Terry Hollander, and ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from R-one-E, single-family residential district, to C-two general commercial district per application RZ twenty-two dash sixteen.
Are there any comments or questions? Bill number five-one-two-five.
Bill number five-one-two-five requested by Michael Horberg, sponsored by Joe Cronin, and ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from A, agricultural district, to C-O, commercial office district per application RZ twenty-two dash seventeen.
You know, this was the bill that we had a couple of speakers who wanted to talk about, I'm sorry, Mr. Cronin, you want to go first?
Fine.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, even though my name is on this as sponsor, I just want to know, I don't support this. County staff didn't support it, planning zoning voted unanimously for denial, city of Wensville has concerns, I mean, this is a point forty-four acre, point four-four acre, uh, part of a twenty-three home subdivision, it's one less than half acre lot, and a, and a twenty-three home subdivision that's served by mostly a private street, I don't think a warehouse should've been there from the starts, but two rights don't make a wrong, and I don't think this needs to be zoned commercial, so I do not support this, it's in my district.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Now, if there are any other persons who want to come up and speak about it, I know there are at least a couple of you who signed up for comments, ma'am, you want to come up? Would you tell us your name, please?
Judy Hemmer, and, um, I'm about the Hill Road, uh, I have lived on that property, on the Nederer property, which is the farm across the road and up there, my whole life, and I lived back on the creek lot, but, when that original warehouse was put there, the, the subdivision, Hill Road, went all the way down to the highway, but that was, you know, it was seventy-four when we got the dual highway there. So, it was, and the P, the Fanning and Sox that built the warehouse there, they lived on Hill Road, at the time that they built the warehouse, they, it was more like a storage with their drywall and all that. But, um, then, when they put the dual highway in, that little section from Piney over to Hill Road, that was kind of a service road, so I would assume it would be state, but, you know, I think the county does it, I don't know what, but it, someday it'll be a service road. Then, we needed the overpass for safety concerns of people dying trying to get to Flynn Hill, that, they finally got the overpass built, but when they did that, in order to get to Hill Road, when, by the time they put a ramp off the highway, they did a total U-turn on our road that goes down Piney, and then it, it dead-ends, and then there was a stop sign where we're going to get to Hill Road. Um, and yes, they were not parking on Hill Road, which is a private road, they were parking right below it, like, right here, and then there's a corner. So, as far as safety issues, and if they're wanting to sell it as commercial, we don't know what might go there. And even trying to leave that, our road, from three to five in the afternoon, you might as well forget it, 'cause you're coming up from Hill Road up Piney, and you gotta make that loop, well, the sun is shining, so you can't see what's coming over the hill on Piney there. Uh, Denny, our neighbor, said he would've liked to come down tonight, but he couldn't make it, and he said he's gotten to where he just doesn't try to leave at that time of day, because you can't see, you're going up the hill, and the sun's coming down the hill, and, um, and I don't know who's in charge of clearing the, like, when we're trying to get up onto Piney to go to, to the overpass or whatever, we're at the top of this U-turn, and there's always grass or something, or one neighbor would go up and take his ride and wore and cut it, and he said he talked to the state about it, and they said they didn't have funding to help with our visibility, because if you're, if you're a car, if you're a truck, we can see you, but when we're coming up out of there, and there's tall grass, we can't see what's coming. That's why I really feel like it's a safety issue, that that not be zoned commercial until they actually get that made into a service road.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wanted to comment on this bill?
My name is Ryan Husharday, uh, property I just one-nine-five-seven Hill Road.
Okay.
Um, so my comments are in line with the rest of the neighbors, it's a safety concern. Um, I have multiple pictures that I'm willing to submit to you, where there's been over thirteen cars parked either within the property and on the exterior of the property, so, from my understanding, from what I can tell, without getting state out there to commit anything, when you come off of Piney Road, it turns onto Hill Road, there's an immediately a state sign that says, um, state maintenance begins here.
Yeah.
Yep. As soon as you reach the front of their property, there is a sign going the opposite way, that says the opposite thing, that state maintenance begins there. So there is a section of road that starts by the stop sign and before their property, that is actual state maintenance. From my understanding, actually, that road from the front of their property on around the corner is actually all Hill Road, again, that's what the signs indicate, and that at some point, the state just had extra asphalt, and they just paved around the corner, it looks like that's what they ran to, 'cause there's always a fight every year of who's going to plow the street. Wensville wants to plow part of it, the state comes and plows the other part, it's always a great race to see who's going to do what. Um, the issue is, like I said, parking, um, there's also been lots of extra traffic, because that is a dead end, and because of the construction, and the landscapers that live there, they now go back to the end of the street and turn around, there is no place to go back and turn around, if you guys have been there, it dead-ends into the Hammer property, so what they do is they get to my property, um, before the last L, and they realized, oh crap, I can't go around the corner, so then they either try to back up in my yard, or they do something to try to get turned around, and it's really frustrating. So, the whole point of adding more commercial to the property, whether it was zoned before or it wasn't zoned, whatever the situation would be, as we could tell, it's zoned our agricultural. Um, Hill Road is not meant for multiple passings, if there are two cars that meet, one car has to pull off onto the shoulder, um, so adding extra traffic back there, people already, because of, um, the new Parkway and the gas station, uh, whenever there's traffic there, they try to skirt around that traffic by going down our road already, um, and this just adds even more with, um, with the commercial aspect of adding that to commercial. Going down past their property on what I now assume is Hill Road, uh, when you're coming and exiting the property, um, there is a ninety-degree corner, it goes from a forty-five-degree angle to a ninety-degree corner. Whenever it snows, ices, the asphalt gets slicker than, um, the regular concrete, the, the state. So, what we end up doing is trying to do some sort of drift down around that corner. If there are any cars that are parked there, we'll end up hitting them, even if there are cars that are parked there, we have a guard rail that we have to try to navigate around and not smash into. So it's already a dangerous area without adding any more congestion of commercial aspect. There's also the aspect that, you know, what does the commercial do to the added value of the residential properties there, you know, I know that they have it slated as commercial, they tried to buy it out at one point, and they were unsuccessful in that, so turning just one property into commercial, um, does not really benefit the rest of the neighborhood as far as being residential and private. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, uh, on this matter? Okay. I know, but we're letting other people who wanted to speak about this bill, you know, we're kind of making this stuff up as we go along.
It's not supposed to be.
Well, okay. Mr. Deanoff.
I'll, I'll be very brief, Madam Chair Warren. Uh, Arnie C. A.C. Deanoff, County Public Advocate. Uh, first of all, I'm opposed to this, uh, let my planning and zoning testimony speak for itself, this is a residential neighborhood, this is going to deteriorate and be deplorable, uh, putting this type of venue inside a residential neighborhood. Uh, there's sewer, uh, service issues, uh, there's an annexation legal question, I want to avoid any potential litigation from the city of Flynn Hill or the city of Wensville, somebody really needs to do a proper, uh, research of the Recorder's Office, there's some talk that the city of Flynn Hill, uh, annexed this property, and it's not an unincorporated county to begin with. Um, there's some issues with buffering, landscape, uh, the appropriate, uh, type of, um, landscaping, um, and I, I really have to go with the support of our professional staff. We pay a lot of money to Mr. Myers and his staff, they resoundly, uh, said, recommended denial, Mr. Hollander can attest to that, he's a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously, I believe the vote was nine to zero, zero to nine, to deny this application.
Eight to zero, thank you.
Eight to zero. Thank you, Madam Chair Warren.
Thank you.
It was amended after that, though, I hope that that's on the notes, but it switched from C-two to C-O.
Yeah, it's, it's on, it's in the application, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, um, this, those bills and the following bills that are going to be entered- that are going to be introduced tonight will be on for a vote next meeting, which is December the 19th. The next bill for introduction is 5126.
Bill number 5126, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Council as a whole, and ordinance adopting and appropriating the fiscal year 2023 budget for St. Charles County, Missouri.
We did have a public comment on that. Any questions or comments from council members?
I got a question. Talking about salaries. I noticed that on some of the percentages, we're talking about retention on different categories, law enforcement and other categories. And the patrol officers is going up 6%. The commanders go up much greater, which is great. But what I didn't find, Joanne, and I think this is a question for you, and it, it should be in the PEP, whatever bill that is, Personal Administration Plan, 5129, but I didn't find it. Where exactly is the, like, if we're passing the PEP, the Personal Administration Plan, we're passing the budget, where is it have the equation in the ordinance exactly how the pay is to be expected? So when we talked about this, when we first started talking about this months ago, we said, is it, is it, this is not going to be an arbitrary formula. It's going to be, it can't be whether or not this person did a great job and merits give them this or that. It's going to be, it's going to be non-arbitrary. It's going to be, this is what it is, you're a patrolman. And let's use that for example, or let's use a service worker in the Highway Department. Their starting pay is this, boom, 50 grand, whatever that number is. So what I'd like to know is what the variables are. I'd like to know, with that $50,000, using that as an example only, that they service, they get five years into the job, or whatever that number is. They get 10 years in, then they're at 55, or they're at 60, whatever that number is. At 18 years, I believe you guys said 18 or 20 is a top-out number. Is that right, Sammy? Is that what you said? You said 18 years, I think?
At 2%, it's 20 years.
At 2%. So then, will we see that number? If everything remains the same, at the five, it was 5% and it was a 3% raise with a 2% cost of living increase. Is that correct? It was 5% total. That's the way I remember you saying it last week, that it's 5% total, but the cost of living is 2%. So it's actually a 3% increase every year. Is that correct? Did I understand that or misunderstand that?
So I think that you're mixing two things. So in that document that we gave you last week, you know, it showed the current pay scale, and it showed the conversion to the new VA scale for each position in county government. So for instance, you asked about the police officers. So they were 209, and it began at 57, 793 this year. Next year, it's C8, and it starts at 61, 755.
Okay, so.
So then they get their years of service on top of that. So especially for the police officers, as we mentioned, we're giving them their complete years of service if they worked for us. If they worked for another agency as a licensed law enforcement officer, we're giving them one year for every two years. So similar to what other agencies are starting to do. So if somebody worked five years at another department, and they worked 10 years with us, they'd be at 15 years. So if they're topping out at around 20, they'd be three-quarters of the way through the pay plan.
Okay, so.
So they're giving their years of service based on that.
Okay, so, so the chart that you submitted, is that, is that part, is that submitted as part of the ordinance as well?
The new pay.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, and this are both in the PAP.
Okay, so, so the, is that, that explains. So what, what I'm asking, Joanne, is, is so if someone were to go and come consider a job at the county, they would be able to look at this chart, and they would know, as an officer, here's my, or whatever that position is, here's the formula. The formula is introduced into the budget as an ordinance. So this is what it is, it's non-arbitrary. So in 10 years, or whatever that number is, this is where they would expect to be. In 15 years, this is where they'd expect to be. And in 20 years, this is where they expect to be, and it's solid. That's what their expectations are because it's going to be a reality passed by ordinance. Is that correct?
And if you remember, what we told you is, is that at a minimum, to get to these 20-year numbers, we have to make pay each year, right after we pay, you know, the debt on the family arena and all that, we have to make the pay the first thing we do. Because if we don't give at least 2%, we'll drop behind in this. If you're able to give 3% or 4% or 5%, obviously, they move much faster through the scale at that point. So 5% would get people through in, let me figure, eight years or 10 years? It, it just depends on what the percentage of raise is that we're able to give. And that's aside from COLA. So if you would decide to give a 1% or a 2% COLA in 2024, we're still telling you, you need to start with a 2% raise to move people through those ranges. And then you look at what you can.
Okay, so it's not, I just want to make sure I understand. So the pay, if someone were to come hire or work for the county, it's not necessarily the way it's going to be, it's the way it's intended to be.
It's the way it's intended.
So is that what you're saying? So it could be changed if, for some reason, there's other issues come up or less taxes, then that's not the way it's going to be. Is that the way I'm understanding?
That's right, we have to have the money to pay it. Or the only other way to do it is to lay off enough employees to pay the others.
Steve, before you ask that question, can I ask this? Just to clarify what you just said about, are we going to, like, say an officer did five years somewhere else, and they're, they're coming to work for us, we're going to give them that service or we're currently doing that?
We are not currently doing that. Starting with the approval of this budget, we would be giving for, if they worked for us. So we've had employees who have worked for us and left and come back.
Sure.
We give them their full time with us. If they did it someplace else, so let's say they were a Salos County officer, and they did 10 years there, we're going to give them five years of credit along the merit line when we hire them. And any money we've got, we're giving that as well.
And that is starting in January?
Starting with the approval of this budget, which actually starts December 25th.
Mr. Elman wanted to speak, yes.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me say something. And Joanne, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we talked about this maybe when we were talking earlier. What Mr. Brazel would like is what I think teachers and firefighters and a lot of other people who work for special districts have, and that is a pay scale where they look at it and they can say, oh yeah, if I'm here seven years, I'll be making at least this amount. And the reason they can do that is because most of their money comes from property tax. Okay? And as we know, our, our houses may go up and down a little bit, but they don't vary that much. So the amount of revenue that those districts get allows them to, to pretty much predict what they're going to, how much money they're going to have five years from now and how much they're going to be paying people. As you know, 61% of our revenue comes from sales taxes, and sales taxes go like this. So the numbers we're talking about now, the 2%, if, if we have a great economy, we may be able to do 3% or 4%. But if, if we have a bad economy, we may have to struggle. And I think we're all committed to do that. But it may be a struggle to come up with a 2%. Did I get that right? Okay.
But Nancy?
Yeah.
One more thing about that, though, is if, if it's years of service, I understand the cost of living because that, that fluctuates all the time. I get it. It may, you may have depression, it may go down and go up. But, but the years of service, shouldn't that be a structured scale? So it's understood? I mean, am I missing, are you saying that the years of service is a structured service? Are you saying it's not?
We still have to have the revenue to support it, is all I'm saying. We agree that we should be looking at that first. But if we don't have the revenue to support it, we could run into a hiccup.
Okay, but I understand that. But I, I'm feeling that by all this hoopla that we've done about the pay scales and all this stuff, the initial problem that we've always had is given to all the county employees, keeping them up with the pay scale. That's always been the argument, that they're not, we're not doing it, and we haven't been doing it. So I don't feel like we're accomplishing anything if we don't make that a solid part of the formula. I, I understand the cost of living, that's a variable, but not the years of service, that's not a variable. They've been there 10 years, they've been there 10 years. That's not a variable. So that's, I mean, so by doing what we're doing is doing nothing.
From what I'm understanding, though, from, from what I heard Sam say before, is it's up to us to commit to that. So to move people through the pay range, we have to commit, and you can't commit future councils to that budget. So you have to commit every year, and like Joanne said, whenever we're done paying whatever debt that legally we have to pay, whatever that pot is that's left, we have to say at least 2% or 3% is going to the pay raises. Correct? We have to make that first be the priority. And then whatever that does with the budget, with however many employees that we have, that's the pot of money that we have left to basically run the county. So it could put us in the position, because you were here before I was in '08, '09, '10, and you saw what happened with sales receipts. And they dropped so much to where we let a number of employees go because we did not have the revenue to be able to do what we were hoping to be able to do. And there are a few years, I think it took four years to get back to where we were in 2007. Is that right, Bob? Three, four years to get back to the same employee count?
Three years.
Three years it took us to get back to the same employee count because we either A, couldn't afford to hire, or B, had to let physicians go because of how this county is funded. I understand what you're talking about. But to Mr. Elman's point, we don't have that recurring school revenue that they have. I mean, the ambulance board just got another 7%. So if the voters want to put another tax increase on, and from what I've seen on everything on social media, everybody just figured out what giving pay raises or passing tax increases does to your revenue bill at the end of the year. I mean, holy crap, I owe another $700 compared to what I owe last year, and I didn't get new cars. It's because you passed a sales, a sales tax increase, and your taxes went up. By the way, you didn't pay that to the county, just so we're clear. The county didn't get new money. But the county's got to figure it out. So whoever before me, and Bob, I'm not pointing fingers, but whatever council before us decided to get rid of real estate taxes put us 61% reliant on sales tax. You don't know what we're going to make next year. You have no idea. So if, if we commit too far and take too big a bite of the apple, and Don, I understand what you're asking, but if we take too big a bite of the apple, then not only are we not going to be able to give raises, we're not going to be able to hire. And I'm going to need some officers to retire at 55 because I'm not going to have enough to pay them. So I'm going to have a smaller law enforcement staff than what I want to have, or highway staff, or whatever, because I don't have the money. So we've got to make sure as a council that we're being fiscally responsible as to whatever we're going to give. We've got to get these guys raises, otherwise, we're not going to keep them. We've got to figure out a way to pay them. But what that's going to mean afterwards is, how am I going to equip you once I pay you? Am I going to give you the equipment that you need to be able to do your job? And that's the other part of the equation. I mean, at the end of the day, the county's only got so much money, and we're going to have to figure it out. But we're going to have to give these guys the raises so we can keep them. And I understand it's frustrating. I see your face right now shaking your head at me, and, and I get it, brother. I, I want to pay you more. And I don't want to lose experienced cops. I want you to be able to stay here. I just want to make sure that everybody understands, we're not saying we're not going to. I just want to understand, when Joe's saying, hey, every year, you should get this raise. Well, I'd love you to get that raise. I just hope we have the money to be able to pay you at the end of the year. Otherwise, I'm not going to be able to afford the employees to begin with. That's a long rant, sorry. So Dave? Sorry, Nancy.
This is the first, the 2023 budget be the first time we've ever had a structured budget as far as salaries where people actually know where they're going to be in 10 years. They're going to be at the midpoint. In 20 years, you're going to be at the top of the scale. We've never had that before in this county. It was always, some people I know had 25 years. They were nowhere near the top. But now that's changed. You're going to move up that scale on a consistent basis. And as far as future revenue, especially the police department, I'd like to see us next year possibly look into a Proposition P where we could raise more money for the police department and not have to go through this every year, so. I'm going to be pushing on that next year.
One more thing, I, I just agree with Mr. Eulen because if you've got a business and you've got, you've got expenses, then the employees are part of that business. I know this is the county government, but you still have to be treated. The employees are essential to the county. They're the boots on the ground. And you can sit there and say that, what Mr. Hammond just said is, this is the first time you've seen step increases going along with the pay scale. David, it's just an idea. If it's not an ordinance, it's just an idea. It's not even, it's not solidified because it's not in the ordinance. I understand what the executive is saying, I get it. But by saying, this is the plan, but we're not going to put it in the ordinance because we don't know where we're going to be financially. That's because you don't want to financially commit to the, the value of the employees. That's what I see. I mean, all the money we spend on all this other stuff, I mean, other stuff could get sacrificed. But if you're going to hire people who, who, who don't know exactly where we're going to be, it's an idea, it's a plan, but it's not actually the solid plan because you know what? We just don't know where we're going to be. I don't think that's right. I really don't. I run a lot of businesses, Mike, and the employees are what is the machine of the operation. And I think this is all crap. Because at the end of the day, we're not doing anything. We're not doing anything, Mike. We're not doing anything. This is all, this is just a big talking game. We're not giving these folks anything because it's not in the ordinance.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Cronin?
20 years ago, when I became an alderman out in Little St. Paul, they sent me for a lot of training, Missouri Municipal League. And a lot of it was legal training, okay? And one of the things that echo what Mike said is it's, it's a bad form of government to bind the hands of future councils. The council that sits up here a year from now, a year, two years from now, five years from now, has to adjust to depend on the changing conditions. I hope you guys get plenty more money. I'm gone at the end of the month anyway. But the same token is, it's impossible to, to promise that and be sure that you're going to get it because the revenue source does go up and down. Yes, Mike is right, 60, 60-plus percent of the money comes in from a sales tax, and sales tax does this. As far as the retention and hiring new officers, every employer has that problem right now. I mean, it's just not, it's not, every department of the county has that problem. So, you know, echoing what, I, I understand the, the thought of trying to say, yes, when you hire in, you're going to stay here 20 years, and you're going to get this, this, and this. And I think that would be great. But in reality, it doesn't work that way in government because the revenues fluctuate so much. And I'm hoping sales tax revenues don't, don't, don't take a nosedive. It's a good possibility they could. As far as a future Proposition P, like Mr. Hammond brought up, there was a poll done a few years ago about that likelihood of that passage, of that passing. Because we discussed this, and we actually had a professional poll done. I didn't have it done, but someone else did, and I saw the results. And along the shore, this was before COVID, before the recession, and we're talking, our stock market crash, and we're talking a future recession. And it wasn't supported by the public in that poll. So we've got a long ways to go to convince the public feel like they're getting taxed to death already.
Nancy?
Yeah.
Yeah. One last thing, you know, obviously, the structure is now there. You know, it's up to the council next year, you know, one year from now, to try to withhold or to keep what we have put out there. And as you folks have mentioned in the administration, it's two to three percent. If we can give you four to five percent, that gets you through there quicker. Again, you know, next year, the year after that, you folks need to remind us about what we're talking about right now. And that hopefully, the, the funding is there. And if it's not, then we have to find a way to make it there so that we can keep you on a pace to get you to the top of that scale before the twenty years. And for police officers, maybe sooner that because of your retirement age.
Okay, let's, let's move on then. We did read the bill when we started this, right? Okay. So the next bill for introduction is bill number five one two seven.
Bill number five one two seven, requested by Amanda Brower, sponsored by Council as a whole, and ordinance approving the transportation improvement plan for fiscal years 2023 through 2025 and corresponding intergovernmental agreements.
Any comments or discussion? The next bill for introduction is bill number five one two eight.
Bill number five one two eight, requested by Steve Elman and Kurt Friz, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, and ordinance authorizing execution of the SWAT mutual aid agreement by and between St. Charles County, Missouri, on behalf of the St. Charles County Police Department, and St. Louis County, Missouri, on behalf of the St. Louis County Police Department, who are the signatories thereto.
Any comments or discussion by council? Hearing done, the next bill for introduction is bill number five one two nine.
Bill number five one two nine, requested by Samantha Shadrock, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, and ordinance amending sections one fifteen point zero seventy-five, one fifteen point one thirty, one fifteen point two ten, one fifteen point two twenty, one fifteen point two forty, one fifteen point five fifty-five, one fifteen point six hundred, one fifteen point six seventy, one fifteen point seven zero five, one fifteen point seven twenty-one, one fifteen point seven twenty-two, one fifteen point eight thirty, and one fifteen point eight forty of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, and enacting new sections one fifteen point seven zero six, one fifteen seven zero seven, and one fifteen point seven zero eight, repealing and replacing sections one fifteen point seven ten, and one fifteen point seven twenty, and deleting all of section one fifteen point seven twenty-five, O S U C M O, all concerning the personnel administration plan, including but not limited to benefits.
Questions or comments? The final bill then for introduction is five one three zero.
Bill number five one three zero, requested by Steve Elman, sponsored by Nancy Schneider, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute agreements for advocacy and lobbying services.
Questions or comments? That concludes the introduction of bills. Is there any action on any of the table bills? Are there any miscellaneous announcements before we adjourn the meeting? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just would say, what was it, two weeks ago, we met with the delegation, and it was very, very encouraging. In the past, we've had, we'd have maybe three or four people show up. I think we had eleven out of fourteen, something like that. We had eleven people show up, we met out at the E D C. We had a great discussion about the issues that we're concerned about. We gave them an opportunity to tell us what they were willing to work on. And some of our new people, I think, are going to do a great job, and some of the people that have been there for a while, I think are really going to be much, much easier to work with as we go forward. So if you see any of them, tell them thank you.
And when does the new legislation, when do they convene next year?
Jan, first week in January.
First week in January.
Yeah.
All right, great. Any other comments?
Can I mention one other thing?
Sure.
It was brought up tonight that the Missouri Legislature this year changed the law to allow jurisdictions to allow corrections workers who are not commissioned officers and dispatchers to be declared first responders and to retire at fifty-five. So the first thing that we had to do, every jurisdiction, believe me, had to do it, who's in loggers, is you have to commission a study with loggers. They have to tell you what the cost of that will be, and they have to tell you what you'll have to back pay if you do adopt that. So we ordered the plan back, what, two and a half months ago? We're in line to get ours done up at loggers, and when we know that, we'll be reporting to you all. But there, it's largely a financial decision that the, that the county will have to make as to when that's adopted.
All right, so we're in line then to get that.
We're in line to get our study.
Okay, all right. Any other announcements?
I'm glad to see Mike Herbert back full-time, and I'm glad to see Mr. Elman's here back to full-time with his new knee. But neither one of you guys have excuses not to go dancing at Christmas time with your wives, so if the ladies are listening, take them out.
All right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.